Welcome to Sandlapper Elementary School tonight. Our meeting, the second meeting of the month, the August 27th meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. I want to welcome everyone here. Sorry we're a little late. Executive session is just accordion zone sometimes and we're just, we're glad to be out here tonight at Sandlapper. We're gonna, in just a second, we're gonna stand and have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand now? Let's remember, let's remember those in our district that are in need and have health issues and family issues. We still have some deaths we are remembering, so let's just have a moment of silence.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of our current agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote on that item. Everybody vote? Yeah, it finally popped up. I just got... This is real slow. You know what? Where's my technical guy? I bet my wife's got a million of these things. I left it home from the conference this weekend. Yeah, I was going, I was running off the phone, I believe, the wireless. Okay, thank you very much. Next is our consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes, facilities report, technology report, budget update, student remission requests, student admission requests into the adult education program, and requests for homeschool instruction and ratification of personnel. Is there any questions on those items?
Ms. Chairman, not a question but a comment. I want to applaud our IT department. The one-to-one initiative rollout is complete from three through 12, so that's a major achievement within the district and I want to thank IT for their hard work in making that happen for us.
Ms. Chairman, I also had a, I had a question about, as it related to the IT report. Tom, are all of the schools, I know we're starting to put Chrome notebooks in, at the third grade level this year, have all the schools gotten those Chrome notebooks, all third graders?
Yes, all third graders were part of the third phase rollout this year. So for the current year, we had rollouts for grade three, grade eight, and the final third of high school. So now everyone in grades three through 12 has a computing device.
Do all of the third graders have them, is what I'm asking specifically, into schools?
Yes, sir.
All the schools have them?
All third graders, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay. Thank you very much.
Do the pracs have taken them home or not taken them home? Is that, what does that depend on, Tom? What is that, how are they making those decisions?
Well, all of, all of the elementary schools, they stay at school. And most of the middle schools, they stay at school as well, except for Blythewood Middle and Muller Road Middle. And then at the high schools, that's a choice of the schools to decide at this time whether they want them to go home. So, so right now, most of the high schools are choosing to go home and I think Blythewood High School's the only current staying-at-school model right now.
That was the only one I visited so far, so I knew they were not. They have them using the carts to recharge them overnight and things like that.
That's right.
Are we going most of the Chromebooks now?
We, we have Chromebooks everywhere except for EL Wright, Muller Road Middle, and that's, that's the only two right there.
So, Mr. Chairman, Muller Road, you gonna switch out the iPads for Chromebooks? Or they're gonna continue with the iPads?
They're, they're gonna continue with the iPads. It's the school's choice on what best works in their environment, and we'll support what they want to do there.
Thank you.
For, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion to, for the approval of our consent agenda?
So move.
Mr. Manning, Ms. Anderson, second. Thank you very much. You're unanimous. Vote. Our next item is special recognitions, which we're gonna have a little special recognition and some student focus, I think, wrapped up into what?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hamm and staff. Tonight, we have one individual to recognize and then we'll hear from some of our host students, as Dr. Fleming said. As I call our honoree forward, I'd like to tell you a little bit about her, and that is Ms. Tamika Battle. Ms. Tamika Battle is a math teacher at Blythewood Academy, and she recently received a 2013 Palmetto Pillar One to Watch Award from the Greater Columbia Chamber of Commerce Information Technology Council. Each year, the council honors the best and brightest of the Midlands' technology community. Ms. Battle was nominated for her tireless work to bring together federal grants, commercial sponsors, and nonprofit organizations to promote information technology across the community. Congratulations. I'm going to move the mic now up front so that we can hear from some Sandlapper students under the direction of Principal Linda Hall, and they're gonna share their thoughts about special happenings at their school.
Welcome Chairman Fleming, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hamm, and other guests. My name is Anisha Owens. I am in fifth grade. Today, we just had our fifth day in school, but we want to share a few important things that we think will make this school year very special. We are, we are excited about what we are learning and the cool ways we get to learn it.
Hi, my name is Christina Thomas, and I am in fifth grade. If you look around our school, you may see some trees of posters around. These trees are of the seven habits. Another word you may see is leadership. All of us at Sandlapper are working on the leader in each of us. At Sandlapper, assist the students, get our choices, but we have our boundaries to make sure we don't lead our, each other into the wrong direction. Each of us have the responsibility of using our own voices in a useful way.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sion Beckford, and I'm in fifth grade. As Christina said, we are learning about the seven habits, or the seven, the same habit, the same kobby habits of the effective people, because we want to be more effective kids. For example, getting up and speaking in front of all of you is a good example, well, good practice for one's habits, like habit one, being proactive, and habit two, begin with the end in mind. We're going to make some changes this year. We want to be more successful. We're not sure what the whole school year will bring, but we know we're going to use our leadership to make it the best school year ever.
Hi, I am Elizabeth Mosher in fourth grade. As we learn about the leader in me, we study other examples of great leaders, and that includes leaders in our school, district, state, and country. I am a military kid. In fact, all of us here tonight are military kids. I came to Sandlapper in second grade. I know what it's like to move around a lot. I lived in Missouri, Texas, Georgia, and now South Carolina. It was so nice when I came here to be welcomed as a new Sandlapper family member. Some of us were trained with our guidance counselor, so we could be mentors to other new military kids, military students, so we could help others.
My name is Jomon Rouse in fourth grade. I've made lots of new friends here in Sandlapper last year, and I'll work very hard this year to welcome new military students to Sandlapper. It's really great that our school protects us, just like our parents protect our nation. We are grateful to our military and thankful to our soldiers from Fort Jackson who helped us do some very special things.
And last but not least, I'm Todd Godby in fifth grade. I really like how Sandlapper cares about our opinions. It makes me want to be proactive and make this school year the best ever. To highlight our special relationship with the military and to show some things we've learned, we have a very brief video to show you. We hope you enjoy it. Be sure to come back and visit us sometime this year. Thank you.
Loyalty. Loyalty starts from the very beginning, starting from when you were raised at home with your parents. So if you're loyal to your parents, then you can be loyal anywhere else.
Alright, kids. Today I'm gonna teach you about respect. Respect is something that you need to have, not only for your parents, but for your teachers, and for any adult, even for your fellow classmates.
Look at you. You are so fast. Fast as you can.
When we're soldiers, we get together to create a mission together. We call it WECON. You guys ready to do a WECON mission?
Thank you for this opportunity just to let our students share a little bit about our year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation from your students. If their parents here, these students' parents, would y'all stand up? I'd like to recognize you guys. Thank you for being part of our district, because it takes everybody. Thank you very much. Okay, our next is our first public participation. Anyone sign up for, anyone signed up? Is there anyone at this time would like to address the board? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to our next item, which is voting on executive session items, which I think the only voting item we have is a student appeal. There were two appeals. Is there a motion on those?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that student number one and student number two be referred to Blythewood Academy.
What did you say? That's student number one?
Blythewood Academy.
Oh, I thought you said, I couldn't understand you.
No, I'm sorry. Both student number one and number two be referred to Blythewood Academy.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask to vote at this time. That's right, Lottie. We didn't even ask y'all to come in. We went right over you. Okay, next, next item is new business, no action requested, report, Richland Two Choice Options. Dr. Hamm, who's gonna be doing that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we'll let Dr. McDaniel do that, but I want to say that the district has a long history of supporting a variety of choice options for our students to meet their academic needs and the families' desires for their children. And the participation in those choice options has been growing over time, and Dr. McDaniel will be bringing up to date on our most current choice events.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Tonight, we want to share with you a little of the history of our choice options and also talk about some current data to kind of give you kind of a big-picture overview, as well as some pertinent, relevant data about the utilization of a variety of choice options by our, by our community. We have tonight Ms. Dawn MacLeod, Director of Academic Initiatives, who a major part of her responsibilities is to oversee the magnet programs. And Mr. Roger Wiley, our district registrar, who a part of his responsibilities is to oversee a variety of choice offerings. And they're going to kick off the presentation.
Mr. McDaniel's went kind of faster, faster than I asked him. Sorry about that. But under our choice options, we have four, four choice options we want to talk about. One is magnet programs, two is expanded choice, option areas, and employee option. And just to give you a little bit of information about each one, you know, our magnet programs offer learning opportunities related to various themes for interested students. Students at the elementary school level are selected through a computer-generated, random selection process, while students applying at the middle school, middle and high school level go through a competitive process centered around a number of criteria. Expanded choice is a computer-generated, random selection process which allows any Richland Two student to apply to attend a school other than their zone school. Now, option areas, you know, we have several option areas where residents are assigned to one high school with an option, with an automatic option to attend another high school. And consistent with our transfer procedures, any student choosing the option school would be required to have their family provide their transportation to and from school. And of course, our employee option allows full-time employees of Richland School District to, to choice their student into or within Richland Two to the school they're choice. And this option does not apply to our magnet centers or magnet programs.
As Dr. Hamm said, we've got a long history of magnet programs in this district, and probably many of you could give this portion of the presentation as well as I have, since we've been involved with these magnets for so long. But we started in 1991 with TLC, our first magnet, and then we picked up on, started expanded choice in 1999. And when we were sitting around the table getting this presentation ready, Fred made the comment that when we first started expanded choice, he managed all the data with an Excel spreadsheet in his office. My gosh, when I started this job in 2006, we had 15 magnets, and now we have 34. We've got 14 elementary, 10 middle school, and 10 high school magnets, but this has just grown and grown. It's very popular in our community. And we've added different types of magnets, too. We've got full school magnets, we've got school-within-the-school magnets, and center schools. So we've added variety as well as number. Our goals for choice have remained consistent as we've grown. We see choice as a method of improving academic achievement by addressing the diverse educational needs of our students, maximizing the use of our space, moving students to schools that are under capacity, aligning our programs to the changing needs of today's employers, enabling each of our schools and our students to experience success, and continuing to meet the high expectations of our public.
Our timeline for choice, it used to be that we had just a certain period where we had handled choice, but it seems like it's year-round now. People start asking questions about it very early on, and so we have a lot of information pertaining to when, when events happen on our website. Then there's, around November, we start an intensive method of communicating to our public through connected messages, videos, magnet information nights, magnet information fairs, magnet magazines, school newsletters, newspaper articles, R2TV, and that goes on from November to January, when we actually start the online process. And choice is entirely online in terms of parents going online to apply. They go online in January, and we keep it open for a whole month, the month of January, in which parents can apply. They go online and they establish an account with a username and a password, and they complete their application online. And the selection process begins in February and ends in March. And our final selections are made in March. And our parents log back into that, that site online, and they find out the results. And from there, they're able to decline or accept. And from there, we're able to also go through our waiting list, because with some schools, we have an extensive number of people applying. But by the end of March, it's pretty much a completed process.
I'm gonna give you a couple of fast facts about choice. In 2013, every school in the district had a student that wanted to come in the door and students that wanted to leave. So we're consistent there. Several of our schools and magnet programs had waiting lists. We had many private school and homeschool participants. We see that over 150 students that we accepted into our magnets or into our schools for this year through expanded choice or magnet program, they, last year, they were either homeschooled or in a private school. So we see that as a vote of confidence in our school district. We've opened two new magnets this year, CFK North and the STEM program at Summit Parkway. And Dent Middle School was our only school that was closed to expanded choice. When we look at, at data, when we're trying to see what's going on in the trends with expanded choice and magnets, we primarily look at three different areas. We look at the number of students that applied for choice. We look at the number of applications that we get in, and then the number of students that are approved for one of their choices. This year, we saw a little bit of a decline, but only about 2% in the number of students that actually applied for expanded choice or for magnets. But we really think that last year's data probably inflated a bit because we had just redrawn our attendance lines, our attendance lines. So we saw more applicants last year than we would have expected. Our number of applications, though, continues to grow. Each student can apply for up to three magnets or expanded choice options. And our total number of approved applicants, again, just mirrors what we saw with the number of student applicants, with about 63% of students getting one of their choices. And that's, that has increased over the years as we've increased our, our options for magnets and have more of our schools open to choice and open new schools. We're seeing a higher position, percentage of students that are accepted.
As we mentioned earlier, we have several option areas where students are assigned to one school and have an automatic option to attend the second school. I think option area first came up in 1991. I think, I believe we had just two then, Spring Valley with an option to Richland Northeast and Richland Northeast with an option of Spring Valley. Now currently, we have four option areas. Blythewood with an option to Ridgeview, which covers the Lake Carolina area. Richland Northeast option to Spring Valley, which covers Spring Valley neighborhood and Columbia Mall area. Spring Valley with an option to Richland Northeast, which covers Green Springs. And Westwood option to Richland Northeast or Spring Valley, which covers Park Lane Road, Brickyard Road, Brickyard Road. As you can see, we have 871 students who attend, out of all of our students that live in option areas, we have 871 that attend their assigned school, 409 opt to go to another school. Now, with employee choice, you know, it's current school year, we have 810 students who utilize an employee choice to attend their Richland Two school other than their zone school. Each of our schools has someone attending through employee choice, covers every one of them. And of the 100, of the 810 students that are attending through employee choice, 237 students reside in a school district other than Richland Two. You know, and that 810 accounts for what, approximately 3% of our, our students in our school district.
So when you look at all of the different choice options that we offer as a school system, you can see that the percentage of students that are in the school that they're, they're residensively assigned to attend is right around the 75% range. A couple, elementary is right at 75% of attending their assigned school. Middle school's slightly higher, high school's slightly higher, and the district average is at 78%. And if you think about, about that average of 78%, that's approximately, that's approximately 6,000 students that attend, or the 22% of 6,000 students that attend a school other than their residensively-assigned school in Richland Two. And that's equivalent to being larger than about 55 of the school systems across the state of South Carolina that we have just exercising choice here in Richland Two. And with that, we are very happy to answer questions. Mr. Wiley, Ms. MacLeod, and Mr. Anderson, and myself are happy to answer any questions you have about any of our choice options.
Okay, questions? Good report. You need to look at yourself on the TV now, see how y'all did.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say it was a great report, but I don't know if I need to ask Dr. Hamm or Dr. McDaniel, but we need to start having these slides put in our board packet, because I could have been prepared more to ask you questions.
Sure, and that's, that's, it was my, my fault, Ms. Specter. I asked these folks to pull together quite a bit of data, and the data wasn't included until this afternoon, and so I take the full blame for that.
Just put it, just put it in there so we'll have it.
Sure.
As a reference.
Yeah, we should, no problem.
Just add it back in there. Public, everybody have it, okay?
Chairman, when's the last time we had some sort of outside study to come in and look at our magnets? Look at the efficacy and the efficiency? You know, are we maximized? Do we have some magnets where we have low attendance that maybe we need to either readjust or rethink? You know, are we making the best use of our dollars? Because I'm a big magnet fan, as I know this board is, but I do want to make sure that the extra dollars that we associate with these programs are being used in the most efficient way. So I don't know the last time we've had somebody come in and do a review from the outside to give us maybe an independent look in some areas we might be able to improve.
I don't recall the, the date, however, typically those evaluations have been done on a program-by-program basis, and I don't know if Dr. Hamm or Mr. Potts will want to comment on that further.
I admit that it has been a while since we have done that kind of
I admit that it has been a while since we have done that kind of an evaluation of our programs. I, we do monitor the number of students who are applying. We have some sense of satisfaction with the program from that, but to actually go in and look at them academically, we haven't done any kind of comprehensive program evaluation in a number of years.
I wonder if that's something that we might not take a look at, um, with, uh, I guess, full board approval. I don't, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire board, but I do think it may be time for us to do that. We, we have pioneer choice, um, and, uh, you know, I see the state saying the state needs to do more of what we're doing, but I do think we want to be as efficient as we can, uh, because it is quite a commitment from our district for teacher-to-student ratio and other things, and just make sure that's shored up and, and looked at from an outside perspective.
Okay, other?
Mr. Chairman, and while we're doing that study, I'd like to ask to just be included, and that would be to consider district-wide choice and, and the whole notion of what impact would that have on us and our district, our performance, uh, the availability? Because I, I really want it to be choice and not chance, you know? When it's a lottery, sometimes it's not really choice, it, it ends up being chance, and, and so I don't want that word to be a misnomer. So let's look at the whole concept of, uh, of district-wide choice, uh, as opposed to the current method. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and my only comment was that I'd like to look at the school-to-school history, tenure history of choice, you know, who's in and out over the ten years. I think that's reasonable.
And Fred's spreadsheet.
Uh, Fred, Fred. I meant to say let Fred do it on the spreadsheet. Um, good, um, High School League rules, we have, we're having any problems with these, with the High School League? I know the answer's gonna be maybe yes, but, but tell me what, what is our situation with our choice? High School League, I know the homeschoolers now are involved and, 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 which is okay with me, I'm not gonna comment on the law, but how's it affect what we're doing athletically and are, are we having some, or, does the High School League accept our choice now? I know it, they used to, I just want to make sure we're still in, in line with them.
Well, closely monitored.
Dr. Fleming, we received a waiver from the South Carolina High School League a number of years ago, and I know that Mr. Wiley and Mr. Smith are in pretty close conversation with them every time we add a program to make sure we're, we're squared away. And when we opened Westwood, we talked with them quite a bit to make sure we're squared away. That is something that we monitor, uh, pretty, very regularly.
Okay. All right. How about anything with the home, do we have any requests? Um, just, I know this is off the subject, but, uh...
Homeschool.
But it, yeah, the homeschoolers.
Charter schools.
See, my point is, if they, if homeschoolers get involved with school, maybe they'll make that decision their friends are here and they want to be part of, it's gonna be, you know, that kind of stuff.
We are receiving some requests. I believe, if I had to put a number on it, I would say we've received approximately six, six to seven homeschool requests and about four to five, uh, charter school requests for various sports across just about all of our schools, our high schools. And I think recently we're, we've received something in regards to, um, elementary school requests.
It's gonna be interesting, okay?
Mr. Chairman, is our charter school included in the data that you presented tonight as a choice option? Was it included?
Mr. Anderson? Richland II Charter High School?
Not as a choice option, though. They, they were, it was included, it was included at the zoned-out data, so if they don't go to their zone school, they, they, they may go to, uh, uh, the charter high school. That last slide Fred showed.
I guess I, I think it should be included. I mean, it is a choice option.
Yes, um, it, it was included in that, but, but not in terms of when you apply to choice, it's not, it's not there, but when you turn, when you zone out of your school, so, yeah.
I think it should be included when you apply to choice. Because there is a process that's very similar, even though it's on a different timeframe, and I realize that, but I'm, I'm thinking that it should be included in that same process of the application process and, and the data you present, that's all I'm saying. So the total number, total number of applicants to choice should be included, the total number of applicants that apply to the charter school as well, because they don't admit everyone either that applies.
Not a problem, we can certainly incorporate that data.
My, my point is, I want to make sure that we inc- incorporate the charter school concept as a real legitimate choice option and not, and for not to be viewed in some sort of punitive way. And when we exclude it and don't promote it as a legitimate choice option, it can be misinterpreted as something less than a real choice, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm trying to emphasize that.
Our charter school with our magnet, our choice fair that we have every year, so we do include the charter in some of our promotions.
So it only makes sense to include the numbers from now on in, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much for your report, appreciate it. Okay, our next item is nine point two, our, our student summer learning report.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, summer programs are an important part of a comprehensive instructional program, whether they're intended to mitigate summer learning loss or to provide opportunities for enrichment and advancement, they're critical to student success, and Mrs. Mallett is going to make a report on summer learning programs for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Uh, you received in your packet three pages, and these are highlights of some of the most popular, uh, opportunities that our students had, and so I'm just gonna take a few minutes to sort of highlight what you have. I'm not gonna read everything. Um, but we do have a LEAK program for all of our middle school students. Um, we had two hundred and seventy-one students to participate. High school summer school, uh, we had a hundred and twenty-eight students, and then the Rogers Center, we had twenty-four students, and eight of those were seniors who graduated. At Anna Boyd, they expanded their, um, offering this year to five weeks instead of four. These students had opportunities to do some service learning and catch up on their academics, as did Blythewood Academy. Keels offered a summer explorers program, uh, which was incredible. Uh, they had a hundred and six students, four weeks, and you have a detailed, um, print out of all that information. Tridac, uh, this is the, was the twenty-eighth year that we've had this, forty-four, four hundred and forty-four students in rising, uh, sixth and ninth grade, um, school classes in Lexington One, Lexington Five, and Richland Two. Of those, a hundred and thirty-two were our students. And then in a few minutes, you're gonna hear more about the Culinary Arts Exchange Program, but our alert student did some independent study this summer, we're excited about that. They'll have an exhibition in September. And then special ed programs, you can see some of the offerings that we had, the number of students, uh, that participated. And most of these were held at Nelson Elementary, and so we're very appreciative of our schools and our principals who are very supportive. And at this time, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Keith Price, principal at Blythewood High School, uh, who will come and share a little bit about the Culinary Arts Exchange Program.
Thank you, Ms. Mallett. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
About one year ago, Chef William Turner and I stood before you to tell you about an expedition that we had just returned from, where we spent two weeks in Queensland, Australia, organizing, planning, and designing an exchange program, hopefully that would fall into place so that two of our culinary students would be able to go there and intern with one of the culinary colleges in Queensland, Australia. And I'm happy to report that we have two students here that had the opportunity to spend a month in an all-expense-paid exchange program over in Queensland, Australia, thanks in due part to the partnership that we have with the Blythewood Rotary. So at this time, I'm gonna turn things over to our two students, our two student chefs. They're both seniors at Blythewood High School in our Culinary Arts Program, and it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Kristy Harris and Mr. David Litchford.
Hello.
Um, me and David, we spent a month at the Queensland College of Wine and Tourism, and for most of the week, we were working at the restaurant, kind of learning some Australian cuisine and just le- learning the specific dishes they do at that restaurant, and we were, went sightseeing and kind of learned about Australian culture and here are some pictures in, that we were in the kitchen, and we learned how to bottle wine, and it was just a really interesting trip that I will never forget.
I'm David, and, uh, the trip was a really great experience and learning because we were with really great chefs at the college and really hands-on learning, and we cooked a lot of unique food that is mostly in Australia, like, uh, it's like a rabbit meatloaf and all sorts of food that we learned. We actually helped cook in the restaurant that is at the college.
You got the kangaroo.
Is that so? Is that your friend or supper?
Yeah.
Baby kangaroo. So y'all went to the zoo, I went there.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of you tell us.
I'd also like to take this time to introduce Chef Tom Cedeo, who is our new Culinary Arts Chef at Blythewood High School, who these students are now working as, uh, his assistants, not only in the classroom, but also outside of their normal Culinary Arts class time, to teach rising culinary students some of the tips of the trade that they've learned, uh, abroad. So this is, uh, Chef Tom Cedeo.
Hi, how are you tonight? It's great to be here. These students worked really hard. They went through an application process for this journey to Australia. So these students were handpicked through that application process. They've worked very hard through all the levels of culinary, through Chef Turner and through myself last year. I'm still getting to learn a lot of all this, um, the teaching part of it, but, uh, from when I heard the program, I think they really had a great opportunity that no culinary student, I don't care if they're in high school or college, could really pass up. They did a great job.
Where did you guys stay? Where did you live while you were there?
Um, we had host families.
Host families. Were you close by, each other, families?
Yes. Um, the place that the college is in is called Stanthorpe, it's very much a small town like Blythewood.
Okay, great. The young man, let me ask you something. Are you the one that came before the board when you were in, like, elementary or middle school? I mean, you were at a board meeting, you didn't come before the board, you were at a board meeting, I think with your mom, and she talked about how much, how well you cooked.
Say yes.
No, that was my friend that did that, actually.
I believe that was, uh, Tyler Young who came, and, uh, he was the one who got really, uh, stage fright when he was up here, and I had to speak for him. I believe that's maybe who you're referring to.
Right. He resembles that, that young man, and I just wondered, because his mother talked about how much he enjoyed cooking, and I'm thinking, here you've gone to Australia, what a great idea, but it's still great that the two of you went, but I was thinking that was the same young man.
Well, Tyler and David, uh, actually are really good friends and actually work, both work at Marco's Pizza, so that's actually...
Quick questions for the, for presenters.
I want to say thank you, students, for coming, and, uh, Chef, Chef Turner, you look fantastic.
Yes.
Good to have you, uh, with us and, um, back here again.
I just want to take a, a brief moment to say thank you for all the opportunity that I've had to, um, to really start this program and, and grow it to what it is today, and I know that with, along with Chef Tom and, and the leadership of, of him, and especially with, with Keith and, and with the, the board and the support that, that's been there, is gonna continue to, to, uh, to rise and just continue to improve and, and be one of the, the leaders in one of the, uh, uh, programs that's looked up as, as one of the best in the, the state and nation. So again, it, it just goes to show you what you can do if you, if you have a vision and if you have, uh, um, the passion, uh, to, to really help students. And, uh, and again, I, I miss it every day, and, um, I just, I, again, I'm thankful for all those years, and I'll never forget it, and, and so God bless every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
My only question is, when's our next meeting at Blythewood so we can have these folks cook a meal for us? Maybe all of our meetings should be at Blythewood.
As long as it's around Thanksgiving.
At one time, Mr. Manning, they did that.
That was great.
What, Chef, uh, I'm sorry. I just want to say to, uh, Chef Turner, I remember our first meal when Blythewood first opened, it was during a Thanksgiving meeting, and you had all of the, the, um, the trimmings and everything, and that was a wonderful, wonderful meal, and school had only been in, what, two months?
Yeah, he had everything for the Indians and Pilgrims, and everything else was there. And he really, I mean, he was...
Exactly, that's all that was missing, and they may have had some of those on the table, I don't know. But I just want to commend you for that, and I wish you the best.
Good luck with your program and your careers because you act, I mean, you two definitely are on a career path, so, uh, I know there's other s- next steps and next steps, but, uh, all success in the world. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one question for Ms. Mallett. I know that summer school this year went all virtual. Was the enrollment, did it increase or decrease based on the virtual style that we have this year?
Actually, it was fewer students this year than it was last year. I don't know exactly how many, but it was less. Um, students who are seniors and need extra, a, a course to graduate could go to the adult center, which is what they did, that's why we had eight who graduated. Um, the cost at, at our Rogers Center is considerably less than our virtual courses, so we didn't have any seniors, that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any, uh, anything else? Okay, our next, uh, presentation tonight and report will be back at school. Uh, Dr. Hamm, looking forward to this one.
I'm actually excited to be giving this report. We got off to a really wonderful beginning of the school year. It's great to have our students and our teachers back in our classrooms, and I also want to commend the administrators and people who worked hard to make sure that the opening of school just looked easy, and it was because it was all of the hard work that they did to make that happen. So I want to thank people. Um, as you know, the back-to-school, um, season actually starts during the summer. Almost as soon as school gets out, we start really hitting the road to make sure that we're gonna have a successful new school year. And one of the most important events of that summer preparation is a two-day in-service that we do with our school, all of our s- school administrators and school, um, the, the leaders of our magnet programs, et cetera, to sort of introduce a theme for a year and make sure that we're all on the same page as we get started. And this year's theme was, um, On the Road to Awesome. Our goal is to have an awesome school year. You may have heard that as you were visiting schools, people talking about awesome, and I hope we hear that word throughout the school year. Uh, we kicked it off with a little video that we're gonna show you now. You might recognize it.
So which is better, a good school or an awesome school?
An awesome school!
Yeah, who goes to an awesome school?
Me.
Yeah? You all do?
Yes!
That's awesome. So what makes it awesome?
You get to learn a lot.
Yeah? What kind of things?
Times, multiplication.
Those are good things. What else makes it awesome?
Multiplication and division.
You guys are really good with multiplication. What else is awesome about your school?
You get to have lunch and they don't let you starve.
That's great. Does anybody have a favorite food?
P-I-Z-Z-A.
They taught you spelling, too. Well done. That's not even multiplication, that was good. So what else is awesome?
Richland II.
That's a good answer.
It's not complicated. Richland II equals awesome.
Well, as a school district, um, we may be a school system, but the quality of our system is only as good as the quality of each of our schools. And of course, one of the most important keys to that excellence is the leadership of the principal. So this year, we're pleased to welcome seven new principals, and I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce them now. Uh, for each of them, we have a print of the Little Red Schoolhouse that's located now on the campus of Ele- uh, Killian Elementary School. And principals, um, we chose this print to remind you of Richland II's long history of excellence in education and the leaders who came before you. It should also be a reminder that your work as a leader will have a lasting impact on the children that your school serves. We are proud to have you join the leadership team of principals, we wish you the very best, and we appreciate your willingness to do this very important work. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask you to come forward and help with this presentation, I'd like to introduce each of the new principals and other board members. Uh, you know, if we don't foul up the whole TV thing, I'm sure that you're welcome to shake their hands and welcome them as well. Shake hands. First, I'd like to introduce Kendra James from Bookman Road Elementary School. Kendra has spent the past seven years there working as assistant principal. Prior to coming to Bookman Road, she taught and coordinated the Avid Program at Dent Middle School and has taught at elementary schools here in the Midlands and in Rock Hill. She received a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Winthrop University, a master's degree in educational administration from USC. She also received an Ed Specialist degree and is currently a doctoral candidate... She also received an Ed Specialist Degree and is currently a doctoral candidate at South Carolina State University. And Ms. James grew up in California and attended elementary and middle school right here in Richland School District Two.
Come all the way down, Kendra. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to introduce Kristen Eubanks, who is the new principal at Bridge Creek Elementary School. Ms. Eubanks began her teaching career at Lake Carolina Elementary, where she taught fourth and fifth grade. In 2010, she was appointed assistant principal at Bridge Creek Elementary, where she proudly served for three years. She received her Bachelor of Science degree in chemical engineering and Master of Arts in Teaching from USC. She received her Educational Specialist degree in Educational Leadership from Capella University. She has a five-year-old son who began kindergarten at Bridge Creek Elementary this year. From Condor Elementary School, Dr. Sean Suber. Dr. Suber has 11 years of experience in education, including beginning out in elementary school in Richland School District One and seven years with Richland School District Two. He served five years as assistant principal at Rice Creek Elementary and two years as assistant principal at Lake Carolina Elementary. Dr. Suber received a bachelor's degree from Newberry College, holds master's degrees from Winthrop University in School Counseling and USC in Educational Administration. In 2008, he earned an Educational Specialist degree in Education Administration. The following year, he earned a doctorate of Philosophy degree in Educational Administration. Both of those degrees are from USC. He has been published in the International Journal of Educational Leadership Preparation, the National Professional Development Schools Journal, and the Palmetto Administrator. Thank you. Dr. David Basile is the new principal at Dent Middle School. Dr. Basile has 27 years of educational experience and has served as a teacher, assistant athletic director, assistant principal, curriculum coordinator, and acting principal. He has served in several Midlands-area schools. Dr. Basile was most recently principal and instructional leader of South Plantation High School in Florida. Dr. Basile received both a Bachelor of Arts in Government and International Studies and Master of Education in School Administration from USC. He also received a Master of Science in Education degree from the University of Pennsylvania, and he received a doctorate in Educational Leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Dr. Basile. From Kelly Mill Middle School, Jeff Timoney. Mr. Timoney has 12 years of educational experience, including six years as assistant principal for Blythewood by design, smaller learning community at Blythewood High School. Prior to joining the Blythewood family, Mr. Timoney served as an assistant administrator and a school counselor at Ermo Middle School. Mr. Timoney received his Bachelor's degree in Psychology, Master's degree in Educational Specialist degree in Counselor Education, and a Master's degree in Educational Administration from USC. Mr. Jeff Timoney. Angela Tom is the new principal at Longleaf Middle School. Ms. Tom most recently served as an assistant principal at Summit Parkway Middle School. She joined Richland Two in 2001 as a language arts teacher at Dent Middle School and later served as a Curriculum Effectiveness Specialist and Director of two after-school programs. Ms. Tom also served as an assistant administrator at Blythewood High School and assistant principal at Lake Carolina Elementary School. Ms. Tom received her Bachelor of Arts in Education from USC Aiken. She received her Master's of Education in Educational Administration from the University of Cincinnati and is working on her Educational Specialist degree. Ms. Tom. And last, but certainly not least, Brenda Matt Foxworth, the new principal at Ridgeview High School. Ms. Foxworth joined Richland Two in 2002 and served as an assistant principal at Ridgeview High School for nine years. Before that, she was an assistant administrator at Spring Valley High School. She attended USC, where she received a Bachelor of Science and Master of Arts in Teaching in Mathematics, as well as a Master's degree in Education Leadership. She is currently a doctoral candidate in Educational Leadership at Nova Southeastern University. Congratulations, Ms. Tom. I mean, it's my back, I'm sorry. Brenda, I'm so sorry, I fouled up your name.
Congratulations.
I hope everyone will give another round of applause. Our teachers were also very busy getting ready during the summer. We welcomed them back to school with a video that you're about to see and a presentation about the four squares that you've already heard about. As you will see, the Richland Two family of educators is awesome outside of the classroom, too.
As you know, our district has grown so large and so quickly that it's really become difficult for us to know members of our own Richland Two family. But here's an attempt to help that situation. For the next few minutes, I invite you to sit back and enjoy getting to know some of your coworkers outside the classroom. I know you'll find them as awesome as I do.
I got my voice from my father. My father had a very low voice, and I started singing second base in seventh grade.
Working with the homeless is great. It's been a passion of mine for a long time, and we collect just so many things. It's unbelievable what we can use. About 200 men, 30 women that we help every Fourth Saturday.
Playing for the game, Cox, it was a great privilege. You know, coming from a small town where I'm from across South Carolina, being able to play at a Division One school. My first tackle was against the University of Georgia. It was big for me. That was my first tackle of my college football career.
When you are going to dive in with a streamline, pop right up. First group ready, one lap of breaststroke. We love Coach Jesse!
It relaxes me, and I don't get a chance to take vacations and stuff, so when I read my books, I put myself in places where people are, and that's what I really like about reading. I get a chance to go different places in my books.
And I just go ahead and spray them. The secret of success for me is to really know the temperature of my oven, because some ovens, even though you put 350, aren't always 350. The best flavor is like a rum pound cake that I have that is made with some Amaretto and some Caribbean rum.
My dad's a singer, untrained, just raw natural talent, and hearing him sing, I wanted to imitate him. I've loved it and actually been singing on stage since I was four years old.
And we had such a great time. It was so nice.
The reception was fun, because all the, you know, watching the dynamic of the families come together.
Our minister actually made a point to talk about how we are both teachers, and it was really special. There were a lot of teachers there, so they all said they really enjoyed that.
You might find me hiking a woodsy trail, skiing out west, or right here, paddling in my kayak.
Running just didn't entertain us enough, so Spartan races and mud runs are our theme.
The toughest one at the Spartan race was the 50-pound sandbag carry up a hill for 100 yards. Yeah, it did. At the end of the race.
Right. It didn't look that bad in the beginning, but when you get to the, it was 11-mile point, and then you have to do it, it makes it a little bit tougher, that's for sure.
It's going to be a picture frame, so I'm going to put pictures. I put a little paint to them, a little sanding to them, a little glaze to them, and just make it the bright colors that I like.
Here are the green bell peppers. There are tomatoes. I give a lot of it away. My mailman gets a bag every couple days. I take him to work. Of course, we eat them.
It started with my great-grandfather, who was a furniture designer, so I think we were just born innately with the talent. I like to decorate personal homes, but I've also enjoyed offices in the district that I've completed.
The Hills love to do things together, so all five of us are involved in karate. It's fantastic exercise. We're all learning self-defense. We're all learning discipline, which is very good for the kids.
And these are two of my seven cats. This is Puck, and that was Deuce Coop. And I have had them for 16 years. Dogs love everybody, but cats are a little more particular. So, when you earn the love of a cat, you have accomplished something.
I've had an interest in the mortician field for a long time, actually since a very young child. Reason being, my dad was part owner of a funeral home. You help families to ease that period of grief. Everyone wants to see mom, dad, brother, sister, look their very best, and it's part of what I do.
For this point in my life, this is definitely my dream home.
We found this home in March, and we moved in in July. Definitely a big kitchen. When you live in an apartment, you don't have much room for spreading out. I also have a craft room, and the backyard is my absolute favorite, because I can just let the dog out, and I don't have to take her out on a leash every time.
We traveled for 22 days from here to Maine and back. They like, when we go to the national parks, there's different activities they can do, and they earn a badge or a patch. Since we first met, we've always liked to travel and always liked to camp. I've wanted to see all the different places in the United States.
To walk in there and see a blue ribbon on your work is just so rewarding. This is my Rival Afghan, and I want a blue ribbon on.
I decided this summer to take dog grooming classes. I like that the people who own the dogs love their dogs so much. It's like they're little children. My name used to be Gina Glenn, so alias Gigi. Grooming by Gigi.
Go Tigers! I went to Clemson and absolutely loved it. One of the best places on earth, as we say in our family, is God's country. My husband went there, and my children are huge Clemson fans, and we own more orange than most people do in our wardrobe.
It was the most fun experience I have ever, ever had. I looked out being the one who had the highest miles per hour.
I'm told that the Charlotte Motor Speedway will allow you to drive at even faster speeds, so I believe that's going to be my next task.
Anyone and everyone can do salsa. It is good for couples. It brings your relationship stronger together, actually. Me and my husband actually met through salsa, and we've been doing it together ever since. So, you can learn it in 30 minutes, but the more you do it, the better you are.
I volunteer, Swiss water rescue technician and EMT. Training itself is actually fairly intense. We've got about a 70% pass rate out of it. I enjoy it. There's the excitement aspect of it, but it's also being able to help people.
And I've run marathons and ultra-marathons all over. My furthest race that I've ever done is a 100-mile ultra-marathon. When you complete 100 miles, you get a belt buckle. I'm proud of all these miles, so keeps me busy.
I'm an assistant basketball coach at Columbia College, homie of the Fighting Koalas. We're good. We're going to be young this year. We've actually signed nine freshmen. I've always been a fan of basketball, always loved basketball. My two sons play basketball, so just in helping with their teams, I realized how much I enjoyed it.
I've developed literature guides for secondary solutions, and this one is about the book Shiloh. This is called Social Studies in the Common Core. It's very exciting to know that the stuff I'm passionate about is reaching different audiences and helping teachers.
I played for the Washington D.C. Warriors for eight years, and then moved to Columbia, and now I have the privilege of playing with the Columbia Bombshells.
It's non-stop, it's a ton of action. You get to be clumsy, and people think you're good at a sport, and it's just, it's really fun, hard work, and you generally have really good people to play with.
We went over to Dominican Republic to help them construct and paint a school. We did Vacation Bible School for the students. We didn't have any electricity there. We didn't have any running water. We didn't have plumbing. The kids that went are from Richland Two schools, and they're ninth, 10th grade students.
I love to see doves. They're really beautiful. Sometimes I can identify a bird by its song. A feeder like this will attract woodpeckers as well as chickadee. It's exciting when I get a good picture.
I've played since I was very young, second grade, and I grew up playing with the USC String Project. I play regularly at church, and I play in the Columbia Community Orchestra, and we give four free concerts a year.
It is a mixed martial arts workout, a little bit of kickboxing, a little bit of boxing, taekwondo, tai chi. It's a mixed martial arts package all rolled up in one.
It's a tough workout, but they always say, I'll be back for more.
You develop a feel of the movement with the horse and your partners. If I turn a little bit to the left, then he knows to turn to the left. If I've had a tough day, the best thing in the world I can do is come out and be with my horses and go for a ride, and it makes everything better.
It's just whatever I come up in my mind, and this one right here, this took probably about three months to do. And all these are intervisual birth houses. Just went to the fair, got a little blue ribbon for it. This started out to be an A-frame, and it kind of went real far with it.
I absolutely love Christmas. A few years ago, I started synchronizing the lights to music. Pull up in front of the house, turn on your radio to a certain station, and as you watch the lights, they're synchronized to the music coming over your radio.
There's no better way to relax than to spend a day on the water trying to catch a largemouth bass, and I love it. I also love to eat them, too. Bass are my favorite. They're my favorite to catch. The crappie are my favorite to eat. Do a lot of fishing at Lake Murray, Lake Water Reef, but Lake Carolina's my favorite place.
I enjoyed serving while I was in, and I enjoy serving as a military spouse and supporting my husband. I love being a military family. I actually didn't think I would enjoy moving every two to three years, but I do. And we have friends all over the country and even overseas.
I want you to meet Elizabeth and Ann, future Richland Two students. They were born in June, and I am the happy grandmother of four beautiful granddaughters. You know, one of the reminders these sweet babies have for me is that when we're thinking about the quality of education that we want for our kids, I want to be good enough for them. So, thanks for your work on making sure that Richland Two is a great place for our kids, my grandkids. Thanks.
So, as you can tell, we're launching into a new school year with just an awesome group of people working to make this absolutely wonderful school year for our children. And so, sort of with those videos as background information, we're going to go into the more traditional back-to-school report with some facts and figures for you, and we're leading that off with Dr. McDaniel giving you some enrollment information.
This morning, our enrollment data was around 475 students growth, and I say around, and you'll see the tilde up there, because these numbers fluctuate this type, this time of year tremendously. On a daily and even hourly basis, the numbers can jump up 50 students, down 50 students. But right now, we're trending consistent with prior years, where we're just continuing to show growth across the school system. Our overall enrollment, again, as of this morning, was approximately 27,450 students when you count all of the students that Richland Two serves. I'm going to turn it over to Jack Carter for a few related data points.
Well, we've had a very interesting summer. From the time school got out till the time school started again, we had about 49 workdays. We lost 25 of them to rain. So, despite that, we were able to complete the drives around the district office and the landscaping. That was a little after school started, but it's done now. We were able to complete the parking at R&amp;E. If you've not had a chance to go by there, you really need to go by it. It really is impressive. It's, there's still a little bit of work on fencing, and we've still got a good bit of work on the concession stands and other aspects of it, but we got... work on the concession stands and other aspects of it, but we got the parking lot open on time. The work at Ridgeview is continuing. We're putting in two new concession stands for baseball and softball, improved handicap accessibility, and actually, for the first time ever, bleachers on the visitor's side of their on-campus athletic field. And then the Killian Bus Lot, they are due to stripe it on Thursday. It looks like we're gonna get two more days of good weather, so that should stay on schedule. They put, they were putting down the last asphalt lifts today. Move on to food service. The first three days of school, we serve 13,294 breakfasts, 39,000 lunches, 2,300 snacks, and we still have a dinner program at a couple of schools, so those numbers, we expect to increase dramatically. Transportation. I'd like to tell you, everything went great, but first couple of days are always a challenge, but we've managed to get our buses back on the lot between 5:00 and 5:30 just about every day. We're up to 114 buses, 78 regular route buses, three of which y'all authorized for purchase to support the CAP program, and then the remainder are special ed buses. And I wanted to report on the CAP program. Again, we're transporting over 18,000 students, so we've run the transloads for CAP. Right now, we're transporting about 58% of the population at CAP in the morning and over 90% in the afternoon. We think that program is proving itself, and that will actually help us gather, get more kids into the program and get her up to capacity. And with that, I will turn it over to Roosevelt.
You've heard me say quite a few times that we have approximately 3,400 employees in the district. We have an exact number right now of 3,489 total staff, 2,011 faculty, 1,320 support staff, 158 administrators. It's been a team effort, as we've hired 334 new to two hires, 244 of which are faculty, 88 support staff, and two administrators. I'll turn it over to Tom Kremner.
Back-to-school technology this year brings, as mentioned earlier, the completion of the rollout of the One-to-One Student Computing Project. This summer, equipment distribution, distribution for the third and final phase of the project was completed, and so now we are pleased to announce that all students in grades 3 through 12 each have their own personal computing device to use with their schoolwork. By the numbers, this represents 22,455 computing devices that are now in the hands of all students in grades 3 through 12. Also new this year is the introduction of the Inside Two Internet Portal. This new web portal is our online resource for faculty, staff, and administration to go to for news, communications, staff collaboration, curriculum, resources, and more. The vision moving forward is to make Inside Two the go-to place for internal communications and resource collaboration. And I think finally, with the implementation of the Common Core state standards, technology is there to help. One of the initiatives this year, and certainly going forward, is a focus on technology professional development to help support curriculum and assessment as it relates to the Common Core, as well as for student attainment of 21st century skills. And ongoing for this year, technology will really continue to aim to make student learning personalized, authentic, collaborative, and awesome for all students. I'll turn that back to Dr.
Lynn, I again want to commend everyone who worked hard, from people in transportation, food services, custodial services, teachers, administrators, everyone who made it possible for us to get off to an awesome start. Many of you had a chance to visit our schools on the first few days of school. We have a very short video just showing those, that very first day, so.
This is our theme for the year, Ticks Like a Pirate. Arrgh! North, south, east or west, sailing the seas we never rest.
Hello? I'm ready to learn some more. Me too.
This is the first day of school at VHE, and we're excited.
How are you? I can tell y'all are ready for everything.
Good morning, how are you? Welcome, welcome.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good morning to all of you, and welcome back to school in an awesome school year.
How many of you were able to sleep peacefully last night? This is my first to be in high school, but for some reason, I am a little, I'm calm. We love our children. We want you to know that we are here for you at any time.
We're entering our third phase of our One-to-One Student Computing Initiative. It's our final phase, and at the end of this phase, we'll have close to 21,000 students who have access to Chromebooks and iPads and some laptops.
CFK was so successful that we were asked to duplicate it out here at Muller Middle and give Blithe Wood another alternative for magnet schools.
The City Magnet is a STEM Institute of Design and Innovation, and it is a magnet program that promotes the use of science, technology, engineering, and math.
But this year, we are obviously opening CFK North. We've done a considerable amount of work at Richland Northeast, redoing their parking lot. Ridgeview, we're doing some athletic field upgrades, increasing the bus parking capacity at the Killian Bus Lot.
It's going smooth, so let's hope. I got two more classes, and I think it'll hopefully be a great first day.
I actually domesticated teaching at the school, so it was a very nice transition for me, coming to Blithe Wood.
The only thing that has changed for me is my title and more responsibilities, but the relationships that I have with the teachers and the kids, it's already phenomenal.
I knew the students coming. I already have relationships with the families here. My son is actually starting kindergarten as well.
I'm really excited. I love Connor. I'm new there, but I can't wait.
We'll take good care of him.
My first day of school was very cool. I got to make a whole bunch of friends.
It was a great first day of school.
That concludes the report.
Great. Good report. Is there, are there any questions for Dr. Hamm or her team here? Heard from a lot of people. Guess it went too smooth, Dr. Hamm, so may give you a chance next year to do the same thing. How about that? Let's go ahead and with our items for agenda, for our agenda next meeting. Dr. Hamm?
We'll have a student focus report. The report on, the second part of the reports on improving academic achievement, this one to focus on middle schools and how we use data for informed decision-making. We'll have a report on summer professional development activities for our classified staff. And the last item is not on your list, but Ms. Anderson requested that we include a report on the family intervention presentation that was made in London, and we will include that.
Okay, other items for future?
Mr. Chair.
I know we're missing some here.
Two requests. I've already notified staff, but just to make sure it gets on there. One, every year, I ask for an updated report on our backups in the district and our ability to recover should there be some sort of data disaster in the district, so I'd like to see that. I know that won't happen next meeting, but whenever appropriate, for staff to be ready. Number two, saw an interesting session this weekend on the new healthcare requirements, and I think there'll be some substantial issues that we may need to attend to in the district, and I've asked if we can please have a report on what that means to us and what we're doing to be prepared for that, and more detail on that area.
I think those reports were online, getting ready to go. Except, you wanna, do you want the backup report for technology and computers? Would you like that in the technology report?
I think I'd like to have a presentation actually given. I think it's a critical issue to the district and would be good. I know other board members have asked about some of that detail as well, just to have a short presentation on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if Mr. Carter has a report ready for security, then we can do that, add that to the agenda. You think it'll be ready by the end? That's where I was asking for security, not to just be walking around with a little flashlight, particularly at night and in the evenings. Not for the kids, but some of them might need it, but we don't want to do that. But if that's ready, that can go on the report. Hopefully, it will be ready, presentation to the board. So I'm asking for it to be a, an approval item if it's ready.
Mr. Chairman. Two items for the future, certainly not for next board meeting though. First one is, at some point, an update on where we are with the 8% spending and those projects that we identified and the funding for those, and sort of an update on where we are with that. And then the second item would be, sort of an update on our early childhood programs, and we added some, some new courses, some new sections rather, some new classes, some additional spaces, and I'd just like to have a sort of broad speed on where we are with regards to that and how we're doing in terms of addressing the waiting lists and the impact of students who are not able to get into our early childhood program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other requests from the board members? And by the way, next, our next board meeting will be, that'd be September 10th, but we're gonna have it at the Center for Inquiry. I don't think we've ever held a board meeting there, so it'll be the first time one of our, one of our magnet schools. We look forward to being there.
I thought, are we gonna look at having it at Midland Tech?
Yes.
We are going to.
We're gonna look into seeing.
Okay. I thought it said the first board meeting.
I don't, you know, yeah, we'll have to schedule. When I say the first board meeting, it will be a first, it will be a first board meeting of the month, because that's the one we have, we usually cycle for schools. Okay? So next, next meeting is at Center for Inquiry. All right. Second time for public participation. Anyone like to speak to the board at this time?
I take courage coming before you to say this, Stevie Johnson, 201 Cricket Hill. In consideration for meetings and those of us who are regular attendees, even with age, these are extremely hard seats for our booties for three hours. And I look around, and you all have the cushions, and I know it's a whole different thing, but I saw Ms. Anderson sit, and I knew she appreciated her chair, and I'm so looking forward to a cushion one day as an active watcher of the board meetings. So when you all make a consideration, only with half jest do I make that request. Thank you. Bring you a cushion from home.
The big pillow.
Mr. Chairman, we need some Red Hawk bleacher cushions to give to the crowd out there.
Honestly, Stevie, these chairs are not comfortable. I'm ready to go, too.
I guess amen to that, my back is killing me, okay?
Okay. Any other, any other requests for audience with the board? Hearing none, we'll go to Board Superintendent Comnet, someone will start to my left. Ms. Brill?
Wanted to thank Dr. Hamm. It was an awesome start, and walking around with you and visiting the schools was absolutely wonderful. I certainly enjoyed it. I don't know where you got your energy, but you did great.
Well, thank you for joining me.
It was a lot of fun. Also want to thank Linda Hall's and Sandlapper students who were here tonight. They did a great job, and it's a great opportunity. As soon as you can get in front of the microphone, it really makes a difference. I think I had to do some sort of soliloquy in the fifth grade at Rosewood Elementary School, and I was starstruck. It was a good experience. Appreciate the new principals being here tonight. Thank you for being here, and thank you for being so patient, waiting for your turn. But we welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you in any way we can, any way we can be helpful. So it's an exciting time to be in Richland Two. And I'm glad to see, great to see Chef Turner here tonight. I know he's been very, very sick, and he looks wonderful, and appreciate the work they're doing with the culinary arts program and the ability to take those kids to Australia for a month. That is awesome. And I think it's cooperation with the Rotary Club in Blithe Wood, and that is wonderful. And want to welcome Dr. Harry Miley. This is his first meeting, and we're glad you're here.
Ms. Elton Johnson?
Yes, I would just like to wish the new principals, as well as the returning principals, an awesome school year, and I look forward to coming and visiting your schools, and some of the schools I've already visited, so I look forward to coming to your school as well.
Mr. Manning?
Chairman, I'd also like to welcome our new principals, and also thank Dr. Julia Boyd and her work for the restoration of the red schoolhouse in our district. She really led that initiative, and my understanding, was she wouldn't take no from anybody until that schoolhouse was renovated, so glad to see it's a new symbol of leadership in our district. Also, as a parent of a third grader, I had the first day of school from a parent's perspective, as well as from a board perspective, and so my daughter had a great first three days, and now on to the first full week of school, and so very excited. I'd also like to announce that I got a unique opportunity to serve on the nominating committee for the Black Caucus for the South Carolina School Board Association, so I'm excited to represent our district at the state level in that regard, to bring in the next level of leadership there, and I'm just looking forward to a great school year.
Ms. Ramsey?
I think the guys, they, well, I think the fellow board members have stated it all. I too want to congratulate the new principals, and to all of our old principals and old staff, keep on doing what you've been doing. I have heard nothing but great things. I have not toured the schools yet, but I'm getting phone calls, and when I see people, it's so much enthusiasm out there that I think it's just contagious. So I really do wish you guys a wonderful year. To Debbie Hamm, Dr. Hamm, and all of your staff, I want to publicly thank you all for making all of this happen. If it were not for you guys, I don't think we would be experiencing the excitement that we are experiencing. The last thing I want, and so glad to see that beautiful face of Lottie's back with us. God has continued to carry you, and I knew that He will do that, and He will continue. And with that said, Barbara Specter is real mad that you principals just got to make principal. She's been sitting up here for years and didn't receive a picture, so I just had to say that, but.
Surely got note cards. But I just noticed that the pictures are different.
There are two different versions of that.
You want one of each, Barbara?
Well, no, I just happened to see it, it's the way it was sitting. I think it's a great present.
Just feel like that you guys.
We just get shovels and plaques, okay?
I'll file that away.
Let her explain herself, she can do that.
I just said, you know, I agree with everything everyone else has said.
All I did was make the comment, I was excited they got that. But anyway, I am excited for you, for the new principals. Congratulations. No, but we did just get note cards. It's fine with me, I think it's great that you have something hanging in your office.
And here's Susan over here. Oh, she's right. I just like to be comical every now and then, my back is killing me.
They just got me started tonight.
They've said it all, there's nothing else to say.
But I did want to say thanks to Dr. Hamm. I was out visiting schools today. It's gonna take me a while to get to all of you, but I did hear the word awesome, and every school I went to, it finally started clicking, okay, it went with the video I'd seen prior, but great job and great school year to everybody. Have an awesome one.
Ms. Jackson? Hey, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of those who've been sitting on those hard bleachers, I will be very brief. I want to thank all of the school principals who've allowed me to come in and visit with them to talk about the October 5th Walk for Life. There's a tremendous amount of excitement to be involved and engaged in that effort, and I'm looking forward to Team Richland, which will be Richland One and Richland Two on October 5th, being a part of that effort. I still have some more schools to visit, and I want to thank those principals who've allowed me to come in and be a part of their faculty meetings and other sessions to talk about the importance of walking for a cure for breast cancer. I had, had the privilege of spending a little bit of time with Dr. Hamm and Ms. Brill, and thoroughly enjoyed it, and excitement was there without a doubt. And last comment I'll make is that, looking forward to the State of the District Breakfast on, on this Thursday. I'm sure Dr. Hamm's gonna talk more about that. I think we have a lot to share with our business partners, and there's some exciting things that are happening in our district, and we're certainly back on the road to being awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Hamm?
I too will be brave. I want to make sure everybody remembers the Partnership Breakfast. It's this Thursday at Westwood High School. It'll be in the gymnasium, starting at 7:30, and you're invited to attend. A number of things have already been covered, but I do want to say again, Ms. Hall, I just love the presentation on Leader in Me. It's, you know, a perfect example of how we develop.
It's, you know, a perfect example of how we develop character in our students, and they were wonderful. They were so poised and articulate, they were just great. And I also thought the figure, 30% of our students are from military families, that that's a really significant factor and a reminder of what an important partner in this school district, Fort Jackson and the military personnel are, and that was a good reminder of what a significant part they are of our school district. And last but not least, I want to say one more time, thank you to everybody. Nothing happened at the beginning of this school year without the whole Richland II family working to make sure that it was a great start for all of our kids, and people pulled together and did a spectacular job, so thank you to everybody.
I just want to make two short statements. Again, I want to also welcome the new principals. Everyone has done that. I want to publicly tell Jack Carter to thank you for not getting a phone call again this year on the first day of school about a school bus. So what if, I think he's got my phone off the hook or something, but I don't, I didn't get one. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate that. And only Bob Davis can have his second last meeting. We thought he was retired one time, but he stayed on, and this is official. This is it, isn't it?
This is Bob's last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, official, yeah, last meeting.
Okay, get up and do your dance.
I thought it was September.
And Dr. Fleming, if I may.
Go ahead.
My, my great honor has been to serve as the Chief Financial Officer for an incredibly marvelous school district in all respects, and I did wear the uniform of a naval officer for over three decades, and I served with some outstanding crews, but I'll tell you, the finest crew I've ever served with was right here in Richland School District II.
We don't have a plaque for him? Y'all didn't, how did I miss this?
I don't know.
Do we not have an extra picture?
Yeah, those pictures over there, what are they for?
I think we should all stand and give the man.
That's what I wanted to do. I think Bob everybody really appreciates not only who you are. What you've done, and that's, and you've, you've, you've kept us, I don't know what the naval term is, but you've kept us afloat, and you've kept us steering in the right direction on the financial helm, and we appreciate all you've done over 16 years, a long time.
Barbara would like to salute you if someone would show her how to salute.
I was asking if there was a difference.
Yeah. We just, thank you. That's all I have to say tonight. We're gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn and get off these hard seats.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Brill, all those, those votes here. Let's do it electronically.
Bob, I would've said something in my comments.
I think it's denial.
Ah, goodness.
Need to adjourn.